...is, I want it deeded so that for now, it can be a rent, and there's a couple of programs out there, they can rent for X amount of years, and it becomes theirs. And it's almost like a rent to own, or whatever. But so it's a deed, so that like, they're struggling right now, they can live in it, you know, whether you're just out of school, whether you're down on your luck, or whatever. And you can kind of get back on your feet, and then you could choose to let that, you could choose to put a second one on top, expand, or you could sell it, and take, you know, a little bit before, and put that down on a 12-foot house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's exciting.
And, 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 okay, yeah, and anyone you want, you know, I'm not like, you know.
Okay.
She just knows.
Yes, it is.
She's the only one who can, she has like, she knows four hundred persons.
Okay.
I'll say it for you.
Yeah, so, and you want to bring.
Why do you want to yell at me?
I'm open.
Well, next to you.
Whoever wants to.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not a yeller, are you, Chris?
It should be okay.
Well, we need this.
Stay one person.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, we haven't drawn.
We're in the right seats.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I refer to catch?
No. I don't know what the law is about.
Yes.
I know at 6:30, we say the pledge. I was like, should I stand up now?
Okay.
Where's everybody?
Peg's on the phone?
That's awesome.
For now. Peg.
What pegs you have?
I am.
Pensacola peg.
Oh, no.
Okay, um.
She bought that house in Florida.
We have.
No need.
She's been at my house.
To, uh.
I can sure.
I got clear. Thank you.
Come on, boys. Needings card.
It's like curtain catch.
It is like curtain catch.
Get one, you lose two. It's a tough life.
All right, stay standing. Call the meeting to order. Uh, Ms. Zirinsky has the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, Ms. Zirin, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Embel, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Deetz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present, peg by five.
Uh, do I have a motion to prove the minutes?
So moved.
February 7th, second, uh, second by Mr. Dietz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Confirmation of appointments, reappointments, Mr. McGee, all is yours.
Sure. Resolution by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointments, as indicated thereafter. Children, Youth, and Family Advisory Board, an appointment, Jeffrey Warren, term to expire, uh, February 21st, 2021, and Mr. Warner's being considered for a two-year term. Okay. Uh, reappointments are Teresa Maynard, term to expire, uh, February 21st, 2021. Election Commission, appointment, Leighton Lee Snover, Jr., term to expire, December 31st, 2019. And Lehigh County, Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, reappointment, Michael Lickenberger, term to expire, March 2nd, 2024. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, uh, appointment, Citizen Representative, Barbara Spirit Rutzler, term to expire, December 31st, 2021. And a reappointment on the Planning Commission as well, Gerald Yob, term to expire, December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
The only thing is, we didn't have our, uh, committee yesterday because of the weather, so we read them out tonight.
All right. If there's no discussion, I'm just gonna call them.
I, I had a question. How long has Mr. Yob been the mayor of Pittsburgh?
He's not. He's on the council.
Oh.
They've been out a few years.
Okay.
He's been the mayor for very long.
Yeah.
Do you need a month?
Yeah, motion, uh, for, vote, this, I'm gonna call for a vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
All, um, tested by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, now we have, courtesy of the floor, I have two people that have signed in. Um, let me say that we have five minutes per individual. I believe the first name is Corinne Goodwin. Ms. Goodwin, if you want to come up, then please identify yourself at the podium.
Thank you. My name is Corinne Goodwin. I'm one of the leaders of Lehigh Valley Transgender Renaissance. Uh, we're located at the Metropolitan Community Church of the Lehigh Valley at 1401 Greenview Drive in Bethlehem. I'm really here tonight at the invitation of Council Person Zirinsky, who I met a few weeks ago at an event where I was speaking about issues affecting trans people. And she said that I would be more than welcome to come and potentially speak with some of you as well. So, that's what I'm doing. Um, our organization has been around since 1992. Uh, our role is to provide support and resources for transgender people here in the Lehigh Valley. It's estimated that between 6,000 and 10,000 people, uh, in our service area are transgender. About 3,000 of those are your constituents. Um, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about trans people and, um, issues that we face. So, contrary to, you know, popular belief, uh, being trans isn't a choice, it's not a lifestyle. Um, nobody chooses to become trans because it's going to make them popular. Um, it's really just a biological fact. And in fact, the incidence of being born as a trans person is about the same as it is for being born with red hair, or with green eyes. Um, the difference being that people with green eyes or red hair don't face quite as many obstacles as we do. Um, and I just wanted to share some numbers with you around sort of the impact of the stigma that trans people face. Fifty-four percent of all transgender students in primary and secondary schools, uh, say that they have been seriously harassed. So that's not teasing, it's not bullying, it's being harassed, uh, not just by students, but also by faculty members and staff. Um, the result of that is, is that, uh, they often drop out of school. Um, they are banned from access to facilities that conform to their gender. They're also banned from sports teams and clubs. And, you know, those, think about what those clubs are all for, and what the sports teams are for. They're for molding people to become better citizens. And if they're not allowed to participate, they don't become great citizens. And if they drop out of school, they're less likely to become great citizens. Then when trans people get out into adulthood, over 30% of them encounter discrimination in the workplace, including myself. That can be, uh, termination of employment, that could be, uh, refusing to hire people, that could be, uh, refusing to promote them. When you're unemployed, the unemployment rate for trans people is currently running at about 12%, three times the national average. Um, and when you're unemployed, of course, you run a risk of poverty. And the poverty level for trans people is significant. Currently, right now, 29% of trans people in the state of Pennsylvania are living below the poverty line. And when you put that all together, you run into a significant homelessness problem, where 20% of all trans people are homeless at some point in their life. Now, I can go on and keep rattling statistics, because I've got them all, and I brought somewhere with me, just so you can have, all have some information.
You have two minutes approximately.
Yep. Um, but I just, you know, you got, you have the general idea, right? So, the truth is, is that all trans people want to do is work, and live, and worship, and buy our groceries, and pay our taxes, and become productive members of society. Unfortunately, um, that's not as easy as it is for so many other people. And on top of that, there are this very limited amount of legislation on the books that, uh, helps us with that, including here in Northampton County. There is no, uh, ordinance that, uh, prevents discrimination, uh, for housing, workplace, and so on, specifically for transgender people. Nor is there in the state. There is in the city of Bethlehem, and there is in the city of Allentown. Um, but, you know, if you live outside of the, in either of those two cities locally, um, literally, you can be thrown out of your apartment if you come out as trans. And you don't have a leg to stand on. So, that really gets to the reason that I'm here tonight, and that is, number one, just to be visible. Um, the truth is, is that it's a lot harder to hate somebody when you know them. And I may be the very first transgender person that you've all met. Um, it's also a lot harder to discriminate against them, and it's a lot easier to become an ally. And that's what I'm really asking you all to do, is to be allies. One of the things that our group does, and a lot of the things that I do, is I regularly go out to community groups, it could be anywhere from a book club to school districts, and, uh, give presentations and information on, uh, the transgender experience, I guess. And, uh, uh, information on what, uh, uh, the obstacles that trans people face, you know, what it is to be transgender, and so on. And, uh, that really gets to the second point of my being here tonight, is I did want to offer you all the opportunity, if you ever wanted to bring us in for, uh, some information, we're happy to present that all to you.
Um, thank you. I think what you, go ahead. No, go.
I just want to thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
And I'm very interested in what kind of protective language would be necessary, uh, to help your community.
So, um, I don't have legislation in front of me right now?
No, but if you would come back with that kind of language.
We'd be happy to talk about that. Um, but, I mean, essentially, right?
Mm-huh.
We want, you know, where it says it's illegal to discriminate against transgender people, in terms of, uh, workplace issues, um, housing, and so on. So, I mean, it's like a two-line piece of legislation.
I think what would be helpful, if you could, if you would like, if you would forward the information you had, and, and the stats and whatnot, to county council, and then we can distribute it, and I'm certain we can have a discussion in one form or another.
Absolutely. I brought some, actually, some propaganda with me tonight, so.
Fine, feel free to, we'll get up here, we'll pass it around.
I'm, I'm a fourth-generation paper maker, so I'm all about things. They're like Doritos, we just make more.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me.
And your contact information is on that?
Yep, you just, um, reach out through our website, it all comes to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have a second name on the list, and I apologize in advance, because I just know I'm gonna mess this up. Caro Bor- Borga Wells Fargo? Is, either I'm being pranked, or is there?
He, he was here anyway.
Do you, okay, well, I guess he saw enough to not want to talk to us. Okay, well, if he left, then if he's not out there, so be it, all right? That's all I have that's signed in. Uh, if there's anyone else who'd like to address council, seeing none, we'll move on, and, uh, we'll go to the county executive report. Mr. McClure, do you have anything?
I have a report on our not-so-rapid P3 bridge project. We have a third bridge, uh, that has been completed.
Yeah.
The GPA has accepted. Um, that's, uh, the news I have about that, um, you've made about $7.5 million in milestone payments thus far. You've received three bridges, that's $2.5 million a bridge. It is my hope, uh, and expectation, that that, that average figure will come down, uh, rapidly. We're at a crossroads right now with P3. In 2019, uh, the, the P3, uh, bridge project, which will never be rapid, uh, but a project nonetheless that the county remains committed to completing. 2019 is the year that will either be a boon for the project, or a bust for the project. By the time I stand here before you, next year, in this meeting, we will know whether this is going to be a success or not. Again, I'll, I'll repeat, it's never been rapid, and it never will be. But we'll, we should have, at this time next year, half of the bridge is done. We should have half of the bridges done. And then we can consider the Herculean efforts that Mr. Dertenger has been engaged in, first, i- in his role as Director of Administration, and now as the GPA representative to the project. Mr. Mealy, who isn't even supposed to be involved in the project, but is working on it every single day. And Mr. Barron's assistant, Mr. Andrew Elliott, who has been absolutely fantastic in getting out into the community to get the easement signed. Because without the easements, there is no bridge project. And he has just been, you, uh, your, uh, your county, uh, your county employees are almost single-handedly trying to make this project, um, which, uh, some days, I don't believe can be completed, uh, on the road to completion. And, and this is the year. We'll find out, can we save this project? This year, we will know. And this time next year, we'll have recommendations for you as to whether we should finish it, or, uh, or not. And, you know, we're working so hard. I personally get involved with trying to get utilities relocated. If no one else can get a utility to call them back, I call them. They call me back. Um, so, this is, this is the kind of stuff that we're doing to make this work. We have another milestone payment coming up. Uh, I, I have to tell you, the newly constituted General Purpose Authority is, um, I, I would, I would use the word skeptical, maybe Ms. Vargo Hefner will talk to you about it in her liaison, uh, report tonight. I don't really want to characterize the GPA, but they're, they have a completely different attitude about this project than, um, the GPA just a year ago. So, um, we're all working together trying to make it a success. That's, that's the piece, we have got three bridges.
I just, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I mean, um, ultimately, though, you set a break, uh, this will be a year to watch.
Right.
But at the end, I mean, it's still a GPA project.
Yes.
I mean, we pay, we pay the money, but I mean, they would have to pull the plug on anything, correct?
They would.
All right.
They would have to.
And I mean, I think it's good, though, I want you to congratulate all the people that are doing all this work, because, you know what, once you're on the bucking bronco, that's not the time to ask, how did I get on the bucking bronco? I mean, you know, we've been down that road, now it's the cha- time to, to move along and get this done.
I, I think I'm actually a little more optimistic about the completion of it, because I know what Mr. Mealy's doing. I know what Mr. Elliott's doing, I know what I'm doing.
Yeah.
And the General Purpose Authority doesn't always get to see that. Even though we have no role, we're taking active, active engagement, because this is a $40 million project, we have to get it done.
Just real quick, i- i- if the county was to do these bridges, if we had not entered this program, realistically, how many bridges could we do a year, and what would the average cost be?
Oh, I have no idea. Uh, first of all, first of all, it's, I just have to sort of gently push back on the premise, because I never would have done this.
Sure.
And so, there, there are bridges that are structurally deficient, that we may have, we may have done ourselves. We may have tried to get on the tip, for example. Because as you know, in this current tip, Lehigh County's getting four times more money than we are. I think we could get some bridges done with some of that money, if the funding was, I think, more equi- equitably distributed. Um, try to say that three times fast. Um, so, i- it's hard to tell. But I think fifteen, we don't know what 15's gonna cost us, we think about $2 million.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's probably gonna take two years.
Yeah.
So, this is a big year. This is a big year for me.
Go ahead, Mr. McGee.
Yeah. And, 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 and my thought is, is that, I, I realize, there's definitely some issues with it. Um, I, I think the issues, in my opinion, are more, were more with the, the GPA and administration, or whatever, leading it, than, than the concept of the idea is.
I think, well, we could talk about that all night long, right?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think that a county is not well-positioned to take advantage of P3. So, really, the only advantage to the county in this process, which is an advantage that, uh, went to the GPA, was to circumvent our procurement rules. So, at the state level, that, they have different ways of sort of monetizing the project. You could put tolls because of utility relocations and, and easements, this was never going to be rapid. I think that, but no one, they didn't know that.
Right, but, I mean.
They didn't know that.
The, the backside of that is, had we done them, all those things would, like, would have had them been done.
True.
Anyway. I mean, we would have had to relocate the utilities, we would have had to get the easements.
Yeah, but you probably never would have done that. You, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have included a lot of the bridges that are included in the P3 in the P3.
Great, agreed.
Did you, Mr. McGee, I had a question.
Yeah, just a question. Do you, are you having, and I, I didn't watch the GPA video, or I didn't attend the last meeting, I'm not on the GPA. But do, do you have any headway with them pulling some of the bridges out, and a fair payment and all?
I, I think Ms. Vargo Hefner could probably answer it better in her liaison report.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have more?
Will you have the deputy, I believe you have the Deputy Sheriff's Association contract before you tonight. We're really pleased with this contract. It is the same contract economically, uh, that the other six unions who have agreed with us, uh, to settle, uh, have settled. The, the step that, um, the career service folks got, and we keep, uh, patching that up for them, and, uh, so, four and a half percent in the first year, and then two and two, and they can get into the new healthcare programs, the new PPO, and the new, uh, the new HSA. So, it's, it's the same deal. Some of the things we got in the negotiations, before this contract, when, it, within Pennsylvania, which as you know is pretty big, we had, uh, overnight stays. So, two deputies would drive out, uh, and I'll give you the most extreme example, would drive out to Erie, and they'd stay overnight, and then come back the next day. That's four days because of comp time and overtime, right? So now, when we're doing any kind of prisoner transport within the Commonwealth, you come back the same day. It's going to save us a tremendous amount of money on overtime. We've also changed the way in the contract, how we're doing hospital stays, so that we will, we will reduce overtime in terms of hospital stays. This contract won't pay for itself, but our budget, uh, with respect to the sheriff's office, is going to look a lot better because of this contract. So, I, I would, uh, I would recommend to you to pass it tonight, and we'll get them in. That'll be the seventh one, I believe, that we, we have done, and, um, we're making, uh, we're making slow but sure progress with the RNs at Gracemont, which will be eight, and of course, unfortunately, we're arbitrating with the corrections officers, which is coming up very soon. You have, uh, a number of ordinances and, and resolutions before you tonight, um, with respect to moving 911 forward. Uh, that, the city of Bethlehem has agreed, uh, to all the MOUs, all the contracts, they've passed them, they're now before us for passage. I commend to you to pass it. As you've heard, we're moving along fairly expeditiously. But I would caution, I would caution folks, and, and as you're out there talking to people who ask you about it, we'll make the state mandated changeover date, but we're not going to rush to get there. Um, you know, there are always unknown unknowns, and, uh, one of them just popped up, to my knowledge, yesterday. It, it shouldn't, uh, keep us from getting to where we're going, but we shouldn't be overly optimistic about when this, when the handover takes place. Any questions about the 911?
When we have the public hearing, you may get a few, but we'll see.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGee. Um, all right, now we will move on to old business. Uh, and it's the consideration of the ordinance, uh, entitled, "An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to Enter Into a Communication Site Lease Agreement with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania," referred to as "Demised Premises." Uh, this ordinance was introduced by Ms. Lot and McGee at our November 1st meeting, and was tabled at the November 15th meeting. Um, I'm asking for a motion to untable this. We can go forward. And Mr. Lot, motion to untable it. Is there a second?
Second.
We need a second for that, but we have a second. All right, so, call for a vote. I'm untabling. Oh. You have a question, Peg?
No questions, no.
All right, all right.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
All right, so it's officially off the table, and, uh, now, is there any discussion?
I just had a question. It just says that the less, lessor shall not charge the less seen any rent for the, uh, uh, for the length of the lease. So, this doesn't cost us anything. Am I accurate in that assessment? Okay. No? I'll be supporting that.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? We have talked about this, and, uh, nothing else? All right, well, there's no other discussion. Uh, call for the vote.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, second on their old business is consideration of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to Enter Into an Agreement of Sale with the City of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of a Motorola Astro 7.14 trunk radio system and associated items." This was introduced by Mr. Lot and Ms. Zirinsky at the November 1st meeting, and was tabled at the November 15th meeting. Um, I'm asking for a motion to take this off the table.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Zirinsky, have the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
All right, so it's officially off the table, and, uh, now, is there any discussion?
I just had a question. It just says that the less, lessor shall not charge the less seen any rent for the, uh, uh, for the length of the lease. So, this doesn't cost us anything. Am I accurate in that assessment? Okay. No? I'll be supporting that.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? We have talked about this, and, uh, nothing else? All right, well, if there's no other discussion, uh, call for the vote.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
All right, so it's officially off the table, and, uh, now, is there any discussion?
I just had a question. It just says that the less, lessor shall not charge the less seen any rent for the, uh, uh, for the length of the lease. So, this doesn't cost us anything. Am I accurate in that assessment? Okay. No? I'll be supporting that.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? We have talked about this, and, uh, nothing else? All right, well, if there's no other discussion, uh, call for the vote.
Mr. Lo.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by vote of nine to zero.
Okay, now, we'll open this up to discussion. Mr. Kuzic?
I guess I had a few questions about, uh, this, and, and the first one is, uh, has to deal with the age of the equipment. Um, how old is the equipment we're getting, and I, most of this stuff, we wind up having to refurbish, and re, um, uh, buy, we're constantly having to upgrade this, uh, this equipment. How old is the, um, the equipment we're receiving, and, uh, when would it expect it to be, you know, obsolete, I guess?
The city of Bethlehem actually invested, uh, they took out a bond, and they invested very heavily in this. Um, most of this equipment is in the area of about five years old, and is, um, presently in, in excellent, um, circumstances. Motorola before, while EMS was drafting this, Motorola, the city of, uh, Bethlehem, as well as, uh, Northampton County's, uh, folks toured everything, reviewed all of what's there, took serial numbers on all the equipment that's there, and took pictures of everything to make certain that everything was in appropriate quality. Everything is, um, everything is as good as we could ask for, and the value that we're getting on this is actually more than what we're paying for.
And that was my next question. How did we come up with a, an estimated value for, for what five-year-old telecom equipment is worth?
The, uh, the company that was, um, charged with doing this both for us, as well as Lehigh and Allentown's consolidation, was tasked with, uh, providing valuations for the equipment based on its age, based on the condition, and based on what we're getting out of this. And they gave us a schedule that provides what it was worth on day one, and what it's worth as we move to this point here. And that's where we got to, was, uh, 1.56 million dollars for now, uh, we'll be paying 1.37.
This is a $40 million project. We have to get it done.
Just real quick, if the county was to do these bridges, if we had not entered this program, realistically, how many bridges could we do a year and what would the average cost be?
Oh, I have no idea. First of all, first of all, it's, I just have to sort of gently push back on the premise because I never would have done this.
Sure.
And so there are bridges that are structurally deficient that we may have, we may have done ourselves. We may have tried to get on the tip, for example, because as you know, in this current tip, Lehigh County is getting four times more money than we are. I think we could get some bridges done with some of that money if the funding was, I think, more equitably distributed. Try to say that three times fast. So it's hard to tell. I think fifteen, we don't know what 15 is going to cost us. We think about $2 million.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's probably going to take two years.
Yeah.
So, this is a big year. This is a big year for me.
Go ahead, Mr. McGee.
Yeah. And my thought is that, I realize there's definitely some issues with it. I think the issues, in my opinion, are more, were more with the GPA and administration or whatever leading it than the concept of the idea is.
I think, well, we could talk about that all night long, right? I think, I think that a county is not well positioned to take advantage of P3. So really, the only advantage to the county in this process, which is an advantage that went to the GPA, was to circumvent our procurement rules. So at the state level, they have different ways of sort of monetizing the project. You could put tolls on roads. We can't do any of that. So it's a, it's a, it's a difficult thing. And, and because of utility relocations and easements, this was never going to be rapid. I think that, but no one, they didn't know that.
Right.
They didn't know that.
The backside of that is, had we done them, all those things would, like, would have had them been done.
True.
Anyway. I mean, we would have had to relocate the utilities. We would have had to get the easements.
Yeah, but you probably never would have done that. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't have included a lot of the bridges that are included in the P3 in the P3.
Great, agree.
Mr. McGee had a question.
Yeah, just a question. Do you, are you having, and I didn't watch the GPA video or I didn't attend the last meeting. I'm not on the GPA. But do you have any headway with them pulling some of the bridges out and a fair payment and all?
I think Ms. Vargo Heffner could probably answer it better in her liaison report.
Yep.
Okay. You have the, I believe you have the Deputy Sheriff's Association contract before you tonight. We're really pleased with this contract. It is the same contract economically that the other six unions who have agreed with us to settle, have settled. The step that the career service folks got, and we keep patching that up for them, and so four and a half percent in the first year, and then two and two, and they can get into the new healthcare programs, the new PPO and the new, the new HSA. So it's, it's the same deal. Some of the things we got in the negotiations, before this contract, when, within Pennsylvania, which as you know is pretty big, we had overnight stays. So two deputies would drive out, and I'll give you the most extreme example, would drive out to Erie and they'd stay overnight and then come back the next day. That's four days because of comp time and overtime, right? So now, when we're doing any kind of prisoner transport within the Commonwealth, you come back the same day. It's going to save us a tremendous amount of money on overtime. We've also changed the way in the contract how we're doing hospital stays, so that we will, we will reduce overtime in terms of hospital stays. This contract won't pay for itself, but our budget with respect to the sheriff's office is going to look a lot better because of this contract. So I would, I would recommend to you to pass it tonight and we'll get them, and that'll be the seventh one, I believe, that we, we have done. And we're making, we're making slow but sure progress with the RNs at Gracdale, which will be eight. And of course, unfortunately, we're arbitrating with the corrections officers, which is coming up very soon. You have a number of ordinances and resolutions before you tonight with respect to moving 911 forward. The city of Bethlehem has agreed to all the MOUs, all the contracts. They've passed them. They're now before us for passage. I commend to you to pass it. As you've heard, we're moving along fairly expeditiously, but I would caution, I would caution folks and as you're out there talking to people who ask you about it, we'll make the state mandated changeover date, but we're not going to rush to get there. You know, there are always unknown unknowns, and one of them just popped up to my knowledge yesterday. It shouldn't keep us from getting to where we're going, but we shouldn't be overly optimistic about when this, when the handover takes place. Any questions about the 911?
When we have the public hearing, you may get a few, but we'll see.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. All right. Now we will move on to old business, and it's the consideration of the ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Northampton County Council authorizing the county of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to enter into a communication site lease agreement with the city of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, referred to as demised premises. This ordinance was introduced by Messrs. Lot and McGee at our November 1st meeting and was tabled at the November 15th meeting. I'm asking for a motion to untable this. We can go forward. Mr. Lot, motion to untable it. Is there a second? We need a second for that, but we have a second. All right. So call for vote on the untabling. Oh. You have a question, Peg?
No questions now.
All right, all right.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. So it's officially off the table. And now, is there any discussion?
I just had a question. It just says that the lessor shall not charge the less seen any rent for the, for the length of the lease. So this doesn't cost us anything. Am I accurate in that assessment? Okay. I'll be supporting that.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? We have talked about this and, nothing else? All right. Well, there's no other discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Second on their old business is consideration of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Northampton County Council authorizing the county of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to enter into an agreement of sale with the city of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of a Motorola Astro 7.14 trunked radio system and associated items. This was introduced by Mr. Lot and Ms. Zerinsky at the November 1st meeting and was tabled at the November 15th meeting. I'm asking for a motion to take this off the table.
So moved.
So moved.
Sec.
Seconded. Zerinsky, have the vote.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Now we'll open this up to discussion. Mr. Kuzic?
I guess I had a few questions about this. And the first one is, has to deal with the age of the equipment. How old is the equipment we're getting? And most of this stuff we wind up having to refurbish and re, by, we're constantly having to upgrade this, this equipment. How old is the, the equipment we're receiving? And when would it expect it to be, you know, obsolete, I guess?
The city of Bethlehem actually invested, they took out a bond and they invested very heavily in this. Most of this equipment is in the area of about five years old and is presently in, in excellent circumstances. Motorola before, while EMS was drafting this, Motorola, the city of Bethlehem, as well as Northampton County's folks toured everything, reviewed all of what's there, took serial numbers on all the equipment that's there and took pictures of everything to make certain that everything was in appropriate quality. Everything is, everything is as good as we could ask for. And the value that we're getting on this is actually more than what we're paying for.
And that was my next question. How did we come up with a, an estimated value for, for what five-year-old telecom equipment is worth?
The, the company that was charged with doing this, both for us, as well as Lehigh and Allentown's consolidation, was tasked with providing valuations for the equipment based on its age, based on the condition, and based on what we're getting out of this. And they gave us a schedule that provides what it was worth on day one and what it's worth as we move to this point here. And that's where we got to, was 1.56 million dollars for now. We'll be paying 1.37.
Okay. And since you brought up the payment structure, I believe it, it's over a multiple year period?
We're paying off the remainder of their, their bond, for this equipment, which would just come out to, huh? As a practical matter.
So we are paying what, I, I'm confused now. We're paying their bond costs?
We're paying, we can't, the, the bond is against the, this equipment here. So we would be paying for it as we would be owning it.
Is this sort of like, excuse me, is this sort of like, if somebody says, here's a car, take over the payments. You're taking over the payments?
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, are we paying for this with Act 12 money from the state at all? Or is this from tax, you know, property tax funding?
It is a combination. The most, the majority of it is coming from, out of the 911 budget.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Dietz?
Is this equipment, then, that we'll use or?
This is equipment that we will use in the same manner that we use all the other equipment. This is equipment we need to dispatch and talk to our, what would then be the fire, EMS and police in Bethlehem. This includes the, the servers, the optical fiber networks that are existing to bring this up there.
As you know, we're not buying this and putting it in a storage unit.
I'm sorry?
We're not just buying this and putting it in a storage.
No, no, no. This is, this is stuff that is absolutely necessary for the transition. It will be used by the county on day one and in some cases, has already been used by the county on some days where we've been helping out down there.
Any other questions? I just had a question. Starting, just two, and I'm sure it's just pro forma, but under warranties, we crossed out and the city shall be responsible for ensuring Motorola Systems completes the transfer of all rights.
That was, yeah, that was prior to Motorola getting back to all of us, specifically EMS, who was preparing this document for us.
Okay.
And at the time, we did not have that piece of the information. Since then, Motorola has made certain that all of those things are taking place.
And that would be under remedies then too, I see it was crossed out?
Yeah. It's, it's no longer an issue. Motorola has provided us the collection of letters we need to satisfy the concerns there.
The only thing I, I was curious, just, and this is just point of information, really. The city or county may exercise an option to cancel this agreement subsequent to the execution by both parties, but before the first payment, is that a why? Or did the attorneys just feel they had to make their, hey, no offense? I mean, I'm just, I, I don't know. What does that mean?
Again, I think that was a matter of language that EMS uses. It's not, it, we actually had a pretty lengthy meeting after EMS had provided this document to us and after it had been provided to you. So you had received it somewhat premature in the first case.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Warner?
Just one question. Have we seen this equipment?
Yes. Oh, no, well, certainly, yeah. No, there was a full, there was a full-scale meeting of our 911 IT people, the Bethlehem 91, Bethlehem's emergency management IT folks. And then we've had Motorola there, as well as the EMS STF to, again, inventory, take serial numbers, take pictures. We've seen it all.
We, and we've got instruction on this too, on how to?
We, we, we have the owner's manuals.
Okay.
To, yes.
All right.
And we've been granted full access to all the locations. The, the keying of doors and the changing of access is still ongoing, but that's part of the process of, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I tell you, I was glad you cleared up, like, the amount we're paying and that. There's some misconception that somehow we're walking to Bethlehem and handing them 1.4 million dollars as sort of a gift. And, and we're not. We're buying equipment for 1.4 million. I've, I've tried to explain that to a couple of people who somehow think we're just being generous with the city of Bethlehem. And I wanted to make sure we made it clear we are buying.
Some of the other way. We are actually on the positive as to the value of what we're buying.
Any other questions, comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Kuzic.
Sure. I, this is a good deal for Bethlehem, no matter how you slice it. I guess my question is, the residents of Bethlehem currently receive a property tax discount. In next year's tax bill, will they be paying the same millage rate as the rest of the county? And, because this discount should go away when we assume control.
I believe, I believe yes is the answer. But we'll get back to you.
Yeah. We'll have to get back to you and let that on.
Yeah.
You may even have to take action.
Yes. Are there any other questions or concerns? If there are none, I think that's a, a good point that you're going to get, let us know. But we could still, if we want to move on this, if there's no other questions, then I'm going to call for a vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business, old business? Anybody on council wants to discuss vintage business? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. And we're going to consider the resolution amending the memorandum of understanding between Northampton County and the city of Bethlehem regarding the transfer of ownership of a trunked radio network. Mr. Lot, would you introduce this?
Now, therefore, it be hereby ordained in an act by Northampton County Council, wrong one. I apologize. And I'll put the speaker on.
Okay.
Take two.
Oh, I had the right one and I thought, I got thrown off. Okay. This is the right one.
Yes, it is.
Now, therefore, it be hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the amended memorandum of understanding shall be approved this 21st day of February 2019. Okay. Are there any questions, discussion about this? Does anybody want any more of it read or it's?
It's quite lengthy.
It is quite lengthy. You know what Mr. Kraft would be saying if you said, read this. He'd be clicking his pen like crazy.
I guess I have one question.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
So it says there's a term limit on the memorandum of understanding. So then it ceases after five years? It's on page six?
Yeah. Jay.
So then, do we have to, won't it all have already been transferred and done? Or no, we have to do it again?
Well, we won't. Okay. To basically, we're finishing the understand, memorandum of understanding. So if there's no other discussion.
Just, no.
Mr. Warner?
And this kind of follows up from the previous issue that I brought up. I believe that there is either an ordinance or a resolution or some piece of legislation that does allow that difference in tax rate. And I believe the Controller's Office audits, does a performance audit on that each year. So I'm just going to ask if our staff could get us the, if you could look back and see where, where the ordinance is, because I would like us to consider amending it to ensure that, you know, counties or residents across, you know, all municipalities share.
A county, we, a county passed a resident, an ordinance doing that.
I, I believe there is some piece of legislation, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution, that discounts the city of Bethlehem from the nine, the cost of the 911 equivalent. And I do know that we receive a report every year from the Controller's Office verifying that. So I think that what council needs to do is see if that legislation exists and if an amendment needs to be made to equalize the tax rates when, when the transition occurs for next year's tax bills.
Zambo is going to check into that. Ms. Warner?
Just on page two, it says the county will assume responsibility for the radio system. The city will transfer, crossed out, assign the FCC licenses. I'm just curious, ownership versus handoff? What, is there a problem there with that?
Mr. Dertinger?
It's just the way the language is properly presented for how the FCC licensing is, is transferred.
It's, it's ours, though.
It will be ours, yes.
But it's?
Yes.
Sounded like they're just going to assign it to us for a couple of years and then take it back.
There is a means by which it gets transferred. So it gets transferred over to us as it, as their license expires.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or issues? If you have Mr. Dertinger here, maybe he can illuminate any concerns?
Well, actually, just want to clarify. So.
Dietz?
My understanding, that's the rules, because we have it with the, in the airplanes. We actually don't need their license. We actually already have our own, because we currently do radio transmissions on that. So we would not acquire their FCC license.
It's a different frequency that we're working from.
Correct, yeah.
So.
Transfer to yours.
All right. Are there any other questions or concerns? If there are none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. Second under new business is consideration of a waiver of appraisals for the Human Services Building Resolution. Mr. Warner, would you please introduce this?
Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Northampton County Council, see, I'm right on it this time, Ron, you're, that the requirement for two sealed appraisals as required under Section 1314B of the Administrator Code be waived for the purchase of the Northampton County Human Services Building in March 2019. So introduced.
Thank you. And Mr. Barron was here at the last meeting, answered many questions. Are there any, is there any discussion, any other questions council wishes to have? Glad we're moving ahead. And, all right. Well, then, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the consideration of collective bargaining unit agreement between the Northampton County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Association and the county of Northampton Resolution. Mr. McGee, would you please introduce this?
Now, therefore, now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the collective bargaining unit agreement between the Northampton County Deputy Sheriff's Association and the county of Northampton shall be approved this 21st day of February 2019.
Thank you. The executive had mentioned this. Is there any questions or discussion on this contract? Are the informations here? If there are, oh.
Just, just one question. Just on the clothing travel, the county will reimburse the sheriffs up to, crossed out, $125 to 300 annually for shoes and boots, approved supplemental equipment. We have special boots. Are they like?
Should be steel tipped.
Steel tipped.
Steel tipped and?
Still means.
Yeah. I guess they go for that much. I don't know. Okay. That's my question.
I think Mr. Kraft requested that, but it could be.
He needs steel boots.
All right. Is there any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. I'm going to be coming to Mr. Warner. Consideration of Article 13 Contract Approval Resolution, Vision Technologies. Mr. Warner, would you please introduce the resolution?
Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Northampton County Council hereby concurs with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Vision Technologies.
Very good. All right. Now, is there any questions, concerns, issues? I know we've talked about this quite a bit. And now, whoever holds your piece, please, for now. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zerinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any other new business on the agenda. Does any council member have any new business they want to throw out here? Seeing none, let's go to council committee reports. Don't all put your hands up. Mr. McGee?
We had the, we didn't have anything yesterday. The personnel was canceled, all the committees, because of the inclement weather.
Finance was committed.
Very judicious decision.
Capital was its.
We held human services right before this meeting. Continuing the discussion on Gracdale. We also need to discuss, or if anybody has a thought and they want to continue the discussion about when or how the timing of the meeting should be held, just let's do it by email and.
Saturday at Blue Noon.
Is that Blue?
I'd like to avoid Saturdays if at all possible.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr.?
I just had one question related to the finance committee. I would have brought it up yesterday. Have the outside auditors reached out and started the, the process yet?
We're getting our work ready for them. They come sometime in the first two weeks of March.
Okay. Thank you.
And you, you have the KOZ, we all got that, that you wanted, you have any, you want at some point bring that up or something?
Bring it up next month.
All right. No problem. Are there any other committee reports? Did you want to?
Sure.
Zerinsky?
The Conservation District's meeting was canceled due to inclement weather on Monday, or Tuesday. And we just had the Parks and Open Space Committee meeting, for which we have changed the name to Environment, Energy and Land Use Committee. And we discussed a potential ad hoc committee to discuss industrial hemp in Northampton County and potential economic development, as well as the implementation of the Green New Deal. That was another discussion that we had. And that's about it. We, most of us were here.
The committee will discuss where to get the seeds from. I know there was some concern about that.
Canada or Europe. I don't know. Not Amazon.
Not Amazon.
All right. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Council Liaison reports?
I attended the Gracdale meeting via technology phone last week. Again, I think what was missed tonight at the Human Services meeting is, there's a very different tone to that meeting. It's a lot more transparent, a lot more informational. There's an actual discussion about the processes of how they handle wounds or how they handle falls. So I, I think going forward, it's going to be helpful. And then as far as GPA, I think I gave a report last time. And I, I don't want to misquote the numbers, but we're meeting on March 5th. I want to say three bridges were taken out of the project. Am I wrong about that? Nothing's taken out yet. Well, Meadows was taken out. That, that was it. But there's, so you heard the rest in the other report.
Are there any other council liaison reports? Seeing none, council clerk?
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Solicitor?
No.
No. All right. Call for adjournment?
So moved.
Ms. Zerinsky? Ms. Heffner? All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here. Thank you.